Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's time to call to order the April seventh city council meeting. Could we have roll call please?
Mayor Dukes?
Here.
Iceman Buckland? Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Councilmember Didball?
Here.
Councilmember Gill?
Here.
All right, we'll open with the invocation by Councilmember Cleveland and then the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Gill. Could all please stand?
Thank you, oh God, for this time to be here, Lord God, and your grace and your love today that we are all here safely and well. We pray now, Lord God, that you would continue to bless us with the rain that you have graciously given to us the last few days. That we would receive what we need, Lord God, and we would appreciate and give you praise for that. We also ask you, oh God, with your infinite wisdom to give us guidance this evening and each and every day that we um, uh, make decisions for this community and, and help the people uh, that are in need. We pray, ask for that wisdom for each one of us. And uh, thank you for your guidance and uh, the decisions that we make, we pray, oh God, would be the best for this community now and into the future. Now, all glory and honor be to you, Lord God, we pray, amen.
Blue pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Accepting the proclamation is Jeannie Warner. Is Jeannie Warner in the audience? All right. I guess we'll move on to item number two, presentation by the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce on tourism funding. And this is being continued to a later date. Next item is public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items of listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Do we have anyone who would like to speak? All right. Do we have any written requests?
None were received.
All right. Appearance of interest in citizens. Members of the public may address the city council on items of interest that are within the city's jurisdiction. Individuals addressing general comments are encouraged to limit their statements to three minutes. Anyone wishing to make anything comments on items not on the agenda tonight, all right? Item number five, bid openings. One heavy duty forklift FB fifteen dash zero five Spencer Morrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I bring before you the award recommendation for the purchase of a uh, heavy duty forklift for the wastewater treatment plant. We've looked at it. Here's, here's a uh, a photo of, I think it's pretty close to the exact same model that uh, we're recommending by Lind. Uh, forklift uses uh, by the plant will be for moving multi-ton basin mixer stands, unloading and transporting various delivered uh, equipment and material and installing or removing industrial equipment from second story buildings. And it uh, its purchase will eliminate the need of additional equipment manpower in the field. The staff at the South Plant considers this uh, uh, an essential tool uh, in doing, performing all the tasks. The award um, for the, the vendors that responded were Holt of California, of Yuba City, California for one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents and Select Equipment Sales Inc. of Blaina Park, California for one hundred thirteen dollars twenty-seven, one hundred thirteen thousand twenty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents. And the award uh, the award is uh, requested to be Holt of California. It's staff's recommendation to award the purchase of one heavy duty forklift to Holt of Cali- Holt of California of Yuba City, California in the amount of one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred sixty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents by finding it is in the best interest of the city to do so. Do you have any questions?
Thank you Spencer, questions?
To the mayor, I just uh, I know that we did, there was some questions and came across as far as renting the forklift versus purchasing the forklift and uh, breaking it up, so I do wanna uh, thank the staff for that clarification of those questions coming through, yes.
Also, uh, the existing forklift that we have is twenty-seven years old. Would that just be surplused out or what's the plans for that?
I believe that is the plan.
All right. Any further questions? Entertain a motion?
Uh, I'll go ahead and make staff's uh, recommendation.
One second. All right, uh, motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Next item is the consent calendar. Excuse me, excuse me, Miss Number Six, our Garden Highway Complete Streets Rehabilitation Franklin to Windship Project. Award of contract total cost of one million one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Diana Langley.
Good evening. So the Garden Ha- Highway Rehabilitation Project from Franklin Avenue to Windship Road provides for an asphalt concrete overlay and installation of curb gutter and sidewalk on the west side of Garden Highway south of Percy Avenue. The project was bid in February and March with the bid opening on March eleventh in which eight bids were received. The low bidder was Tyker Construction of Davis in the amount of nine hundred forty-seven thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars. Funding for the project includes six hundred seventy-three thousand in federal regional surface transportation program grant funds, one hundred sixty thousand in congestion mitigation and air quality improvement program grant funds and three hundred twenty-two thousand four hundred dollars in Transportation Development Act local funds. In addition, as part of the staff is requesting a fifteen percent contingency on this project due to the possibility of um, unsuitable subgrade within the project which requires additional digouts. So total cost for the project including the construction, construction engineering and construction management totals one million one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Tyker has expressed an interest in starting the job as soon as the contracts are executed. So we would anticipate a start date in May with completion in early July.
All right, any questions of staff?
To the mayor, real quick, Dan, is this the first time we have Tyker coming back to, in our community in a long time to do projects?
Um, well, Tyker's been working for Sabifka
Right.
on their project in terms of as a city contract, it's been a few years since Tyker's has done a project in Yuba City for, specifically for the city.
Yeah, cause I remember we had a conversation with them back in Washington DC as far as why they were not bidding on our projects. And so it's nice to see that they're actually coming back and bidding on these projects, yeah. Great, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mayor, um, actually you answered one of the questions that I had. But I was concerned about the underlayment that it was gonna be adequate because uh, some of the areas that I saw failing, since I lived near there, were of the type of depressions which shows that there is something wrong underneath the asphalt itself. So, um, I'm glad that was included in there to uh, look at that because there are actually quite a few areas that are um, compressing and sinking in a way that shows that it is need for more digout than, than we would hope so. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second pet.
I have a motion in a second, any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There are no separate discussions on these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone from the council that'd like to remove anything or discuss anything? Staff? Public? All right. Entertain a motion on the con- consent calendar. All right. Yeah, we got a motion in a second. All right, and you've heard a discussion.
Sorry.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, then unanimous, item number nine. Recology request for reimbursement for South Area Stormwater Improvements and Feather River Organics Compost Pad Stormwater Improvements. Mr. Craigor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Uh, the matter before you this evening uh, concerns a, a request from Recology Yuba Sutter with regard to reimbursements from the city's rate stabilization and capitalization funds. So before I get into um, the background, I would like to introduce some people who are in the audience this evening uh, related to this matter. Uh, we have Mike Leggins, so these are our recology folks over here, uh, Mike Leggins, we have Phil Graham, Ed Farewell, thank you Ed. You know, from, from afar, I was thinking it was Tom Norris, so I was shocked to see Ed sitting there. So there, there's my eye, eyesight for you Ed. You could tell Tom that, I don't know what Tom's gonna read into that. Uh, and then Terry Bentley um, as well, from Recology Yuba Center. And then uh, on the opposite side, uh, either wearing the white hat or the black hat is Keith Martin who's uh, been, been, I think in the Yuba Center area longer than anyone that I know of, at least serving, serving the jurisdictions here. Uh, and he is with the Regional Waste Management Authority and you also know him to be with Yuba Center Transit Authority. Um, so, so a little bit of background, yeah, in two thousand and eight, the cities and counties set up a rate stabilization capitalization fund for two specific purposes. Uh, one had to do with stabilizing rates because we had gone through a period of rates peaking and dipping and we wanted to make sure that we could normalize them over time, especially for the benefit of the rate payers. Uh, the second matter had to do with one-time capital expenses. And these one-time outlays that uh, at times were causing peaks in rates, we wanted to have funds set aside to be able to adequately fund on them as they arose. This uh, request concerns, concerns the latter, those one-time capital expenses. Outlined in your staff report are a few projects over the years that have been funded from the rate stabilization and capitalization fund. So in a nutshell, we have found that it has worked well. Um, I would like to um, uh, ask as part of this, I believe um, Mike Leggins, the general manager here, has um, a brief presentation to go over the request for these two items. Uh, the request was heard already by the Regional Waste Management Authority. Uh, the city of Yuba City keeps our funds in uh, with the new update of our uh, collection service agreement with Recology. Uh, we keep a, a separate fund apart from the others who continue to maintain their funds with the Regional Waste Management Authority. Our share is approximately forty-two percent. So the other jurisdictions did approve, uh, the, the other remaining amount, uh, which is of course is the fifty-eight percent um, amount. And that was approved on March twenty-sixth. So this is the second stage of it coming before the council. And at this point in time, if it's okay with the mayor, I'd like to ask Mike Leggins to come forward to present.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Craigor. Uh, Mayor Dukes, council members, again, I'm Mike Leggins, general manager of Recology, uh, Recology Yuba Sutter. And I just wanted to give you a bit of a back, bit of a background and refresher as to what, what, what the projects were about, so. With that, and most of these, uh, most of you have probably been out at the site, but the projects really relate to, one is the uh, Feather River Organics and that's, that's kind of the shaded area that's uh, that's up there on, uh, in, towards the middle. The other part just to the right-hand side is the area wh- which we're calling the South Area uh, Work Project. And that's where the transfer station sits, the emerf facility, our offices, the maintenance shop. So those are the two different projects uh, uh, to be, to be uh, to remember. So the projects are really related to a requirement that the state water resource, uh, the state regional board has required, uh, water boards required uh, of, of our, of the company. And I didn't put all the projects on this list, but there, there's a number of them, but these are the major ones. So related to the uh, South Area Work Plan as we're calling it there, was basically regrading the site, repaving, uh, regrading some of the gr- uh, gravel areas. We also needed to evaluate and repair some of the underground uh, structure, uh, piping. And the reason for this is uh, the water board requires that we minimize the amount of infiltration that's going through uh, these areas into the old landfill part. So uh, with, so really the, the projects are designed to minimize any kind of infiltration. A lot of the projects in the South Area, uh, i- in the South Area haven't really been uh, uh, done over the last fifteen years. So this is really the, uh, a big project. Uh, we don't expect to have too many uh, large projects like that for the, for the future. This is really something that's been, that hasn't been done in the last fifteen years. To move over to the uh, Feather River Organics Compost Facility, they're requiring that we actually capture all the water and contain it and not, not allow it to leave uh, the site. So what that required was uh, a twelve acre, uh, what they call a low permeability uh, cap or underneath, underneath the uh, the compost operating area. And basically that prevents any kind of liquid from, again, infiltrating into that area. It runs off, it's captured, it's contained. It uh, the, the runoff containment system is basically a, you know, a bunch of storage tanks at this point. And also, uh, it's related to, the costs related to this project is all the piping, you know, to piping and pumping and valving to contain that, that liquid. So those are the major ones, there are other little, there are other projects mainly uh, ponding and different things like that we needed to clean up. This is actually, in case there's a question, this is what we call the South Area that has the transfer station, the office, the maintenance. Thank you. This is actually a before shot, just to give you an idea of what the water board was concerned about. I don't know if you can really see it, but out, out in the uh, lower, the lower left-hand corner there is, is a bunch of paving and it has cracks in it. There, there were a lot of those little areas, you can see where water is ponded. Those are, those are the concerns of the water board, uh, that they wanna basically minimize and, and try and prevent as much as possible. So the project, this is actually in the South Area. The project afterwards, after we were completed, thank you, is, that's the same area. And this is actually during a storm, so you can see that there's no ponding, there's no cracks in the pavement. And that's what we, that's what we need to maintain. And a lot of this was because the landfill is there, there's a lot of, you know, dips and valleys, so all of that was dealt with uh, during that project. This is also another part of the grading uh, in, in the gravelled area. And just, just to keep the water from ponding or to, to maintain uh, that it runs off. Now this is, uh, this is an aerial view of the uh, Feather River Organics Project. And I think it's important to note that, you know, on all these projects, we're always trying to control as much, uh, control the project costs as much as possible. This project was done over a, basically a nine-month period because we needed to continue to operate on the site. So as, as we did the compost operation, we put in the pad underneath all that. So where you see all those co- those uh, windrows, that's where the uh, low permeability uh, uh, pad was, was placed. And again, we tried to make, uh, keep the cost as low as possible, did a lot with in-house, used a lot of recycled material from the Austin Road landfill and uh, built very, you know, a very cost-effective uh, pad. So with, with that, that provides kind of a general idea of what the major projects were. And they were extensive, they took time, they started uh, kind of late in uh, two thousand thirteen. Many of those were completed by October of two thousand fourteen. There's some additional things that we're still doing there, but this was really the major part of a, uh, the effort related to the request for the funds, so um, again, we appreciate your consideration for, you know, for, you know, for our request, um, we're happy to answer any questions. And again, as uh, Mr. Craigor mentioned, we have some of the other folks that, that were more involved over that time period to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions of Mike at this time?
Mike, I have a couple of questions. Now, with this photo here, um, the rose at the top, that is composting in progress, I presume. So the far left is where the finished product is?
That's correct.
And the green area, is that the, the cover for the old landfill, is it?
That's correct.
Right. Haven't seen it from this, this angle before, so it's just.
Yeah, the, these are recent shots of maybe a couple of weeks ago, actually, so. I think that's, you could see the kind of piping systems on that, so. And I think that if I'm not, uh, you need to correct me, I think that's land, what they call landfill number two, LF two, which is, there's three different areas and that's, that's the middle one.
So when you pile those up in different piles, they just sit there for periods of time and then you move them up to, for processing to, to move out of the area or how does that work?
You know, I'll actually have uh, Phil Graham mention that, but in general, in general, it's, you can correct me, it's the processing happens on the right-hand side and as it, as it goes through, it takes a, a period of time. Not exact.
Just go ahead and come on up. What happens is that they actually don't just sit there, we, we put them in elongated windrows so that we can get as much air to the material as possible. In this particular instance, we go in, we don't grind it, which is typical of a, a, a composting operation, but what we do is we put about one to two weeks worth of material in each windrow and it's managed, it's turned and watered every day. And so that fosters the, the breakdown process by the bacteria. And, and if you look at the, we, we kind of rotate the, the machines to the material rather than the material to the machines, which makes it a little cheaper uh, to do. So you can see in the foreground before the, you see the finished material, like you said, to the left, that first windrow, receiving windrow is just to the, to the right of the real dark material. That's where we're receiving, so that's being, the, the garbage that's in the material is being um, taken out and then we're windrowing, so as you go toward the north, you can see it gets older and older, so that's the, you can actually see the breakdown of the material. So it works out pretty nicely that way.
All right, thank you.
No problem.
You have a question?
Yeah, um, is regarding uh, the collection of the uh, water and everything, uh, I know uh, the state has made regulations uh, just way beyond. And that's why uh, building new facilities is so difficult throughout the state. Because you have catch basins, you have vaults, you have all kinds of systems they require now. Um, I've noticed that sometimes they actually put them under pole barns now in smaller operations just so that they don't have fluid raining on them so they can control it even better. Uh, that gets very expensive. My question would be, um, what's the long-term solution for um, the catch basins, the liquids, since they are just uh, those types of tanks you have now? What's the future for that?
Well, right now, the, the future of that is we're actually looking at a different system right now as far as uh, containment. And uh, we, we have probably about thirty-nine Baker tanks out, what, what they call tank, the twenty-one, twenty-one thousand gallon tanks out there. And that helps us contain all the liquids under a certain storm event. The, uh, for the future, we're, we're looking at, at least for the, the immediate future, we're looking at a different uh, tank system and we're going through a permitting process right now to determine if we can actually put it in. And to, to use a better, for, for the lack of a better term, I'm gonna call it a doughboy pool almost. And so what that'll do is it'll allow us to uh, spread this system out um, over, you know, over a certain area. It'll minimize all the piping and, and the, and the pumping uh, as much as we're doing now. So, so that's part of the effort of us, uh, you know, we had to go to this system because you couldn't permit something as quickly as, as we needed to. So this is really, the tanks are really kind of an interim system, but we're, we're, we're looking at a different system that might uh, you know, is, is actually gonna create a, a lower operating cost for us.
And like I mentioned, uh, that's why some of them are actually putting uh, lowered pole barns above some of the stuff, parts of it, so that you don't have that runoff problem when the storms come through and, and vaulted in cement vault type things, it's, it's almost cost prohibitive now to do that, so. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mike, one other question, you, you talked, or you talked about putting water on these to help break this down. Do you recycle any of this water then, or are you able to do that or not?
You know, I think it depends on the time of, time of year, but. Phil, Phil, Phil can answer that question.
We actually do, um, the water that we do collect is either discharged to the sewer system or it's used back on the composting process, so we would, we do do that. Um, the issue that we have is with that amount of tanks, and you can kind of see the tanks, but um, we don't know when the next storm's gonna hit, so we need to have the full uh, freeboard or the capacity of those tanks, so it's kind of difficult to, to do that all the time um, in, in planning it, but um, yeah, we do use as much of that as we can back on the compost, so we, so we actually collect the storm water and use it.
All right, thank you. All right. Then uh, any other questions? All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this item?
Jackie Solomon just came in, maybe she'd like to say a few words.
She probably would, yeah. All right.
Recycle, reuse, repurpose, right?
Yeah, the three are. So I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
All right, a motion in a second, any further comments or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next item, item number ten, priorities and goals for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen, Mr. Craigor.
Yes, Mr. Members, Members of the Council. We only have one more item, so if you really wanna stay, you can.
Perfect timing.
No, no pressure on you. Um, good night Keith.
You guys here just in time to leave.
There you go. Wanted to give you some benefit of being here.
Thank you.
Ms. Ms. Solomon. Um, so your, uh, your next and final uh, item for consideration this evening are your priorities and goals for the upcoming fiscal year. Your council had a goal-setting session uh, within the past few months. Um, at that time, you reconfirmed the city's longstanding goals, uh, which I always liken to, any good community should have goals like these. So um, as much as we uh, over the years have, have formulated and come upon these uh, as a city and you have, have, as a council, um, with regard to public safety, the importance of public safety, the importance of developing our local economy, um, the importance of maintaining and improving our infrastructure as you approve tonight, uh, improvements to Garden Highway, developing our organization, which of course are the, the people who provide the services to our community, uh, preparing for growth for the future, since our general plan is one in which we envision a community uh, roughly twice the size, uh, which we already are. And finally, uh, enhancing our image and reputation. And as we joke, sometimes that's purposeful and sometimes you have California Chrome come along. And it's good to be able to uh, take a lot of pride in, in, in happening such as that. Uh, the workshop um, is always beneficial to staff, uh, just to say we appreciate the time of the council, you excuse me, you take about a full day out of your schedule to be able to give us time and guidance. Uh, so where does it go from here? Um, this, the purpose of this uh, presentation tonight is really for the council to be able to memorialize the goals for the benefit of the public and also to be able to say to the city staff, as you formulate your uh, the, the budget that's going to come before the council for consideration in the coming months, that these are the foundational principles upon which you want us to build that budget and suggest how the money should be programmed. Um, and furthermore beyond that are really the initiatives that each department will develop as part of that budget plan. And what we commit back uh, to not only the council but also to the community is a regular reporting on the progress on those initiatives. We reported back to you last August, we report back to you prior to the workshop and we will continue to do that so that um, not only the council but the community can see the progress that's being made in these uh, important areas. So that's the, the, that's the shell of the presentation, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Craigor, any questions? Comments? All right, well, thank you very much, I believe that was just a note and file. All right, and moving on to business from the city council, councilmember Cleveland.
Yes, uh, besides having this wonderful rain, as everybody says, and some pea-sized hail that came down for quite a while, that was interesting today, but um, had the housing authority Quite a while, that was interesting today, but, um, had the Housing Authority meeting, uh, this, uh, last week. Uh, gonna have one, another one, uh, in, uh, in two weeks, uh, regarding some issues, but. The ADA units in Richland Housing that have been, uh, required by HUD to be built, uh, on single floor. Some of the open grass areas there that we just watered, they're now gonna be having ADA units in there. Some of them are getting close to being completed. Um, also the community center and meeting hall, the old, uh, Miles Building is now, uh. Gone and a new one is there. They're getting the, um, HVAC screening up, which the city required. They didn't realize that it was gonna be necessary, the housing didn't, and, um, so that'll be up, and they'll have a wonderful meeting center there. Um, much larger, modern, uh, and, uh, green, uh, good for the, uh, in its, uh, construction. Also Maple Park Senior Affordable Housing broke ground in Live Oak. I know it's not Yuba City, but it's a huge project up there and a need for affordable senior housing. I think it's thirty-four units. In the Maple Park, uh, development that's been done up there, and looking forward to, uh, doing some of the same. Uh, projects and expanding, uh, in, uh, S- uh, Yuba City. Uh, that's also on the slate to be over the next couple of years, so. Other than that, very healthy, strong, um, and we're gonna be going out soon for a new director. Uh, we're gonna be also reassessing what periodically, uh, housing authorities need to, or any government agency needs to look at. What positions are and can they be changed? Do they need to be changed according to the change in the, um, the structure? And we're gonna be doing an assessment on that and seeing if it needs to be even restructured in its, um, staffing. So, um, that's, that's going on now, and gonna come out of this as strong as ever.
All right, thank you. Councilmember did well.
And let's see, we had the Yuba Center Transit Meeting, which was pretty much, um. Uh, the, the big change with the, the, uh, mapping will be from the mall stop to the Gray Avenue one. So we had a couple of concerns with, um, some of the senior citizens who may necess- uh, who may have a greater walk. Um, so they'll be working with the mall, um, to ensure that there's a safe route to get into the mall. But other than that, it was a pretty straightforward meeting. Um, the Bakaai Parade, um, had a great event, walked the parade and. Enjoyed the, the weather out there, um, and let's see. And then we also had the employee, city employee awards. And that was a great event. Thank you very much for putting that together, and hopefully in the future we'll do it again.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gill.
Yeah, um, also attended the Bakaai, uh, parade itself, and, uh, attended the dinner, learned a lot at the dinner. Uh, I didn't know that Yuba City, we have our own sheriff, and, uh, so also learned I'm still the mayor of Yuba City. So I thought that was kind of nice. Um, attended the Center Beats Flood Agency Finance Meeting, as well as an update for the city of Yuba City with the mayor and myself. Still continue to negotiate, uh, with the tribes, uh, trying to see if we can finish this thing along sooner than later. Uh, or, of course, you know, the paper's been doing a pretty good job as far as keeping everybody up to date on it. But there still continues to be a lot of negotiations of trying to get these levies fixed where we can get started. Like ASAP, and I was telling our attorney a little while ago, if we don't, if we're not able to get started this year on the levees. I think we're looking at between five to six million dollar additional costs. And if we're still on goal to get everything done, we would have majority, or we still can have majority of the levies fixed. Exception of the south of Laurel Road, uh, which is a couple of miles. And with Mike Ameni and Scott Shapiro, when we had gone back to Washington DC. Were able to discuss for additional financing to fix the Laurel Avenue, as well as a couple of other hotspots that were identified in the bypass levy. So our goal would have been that within this year or early spring of next year, we would have probably been able to fix all forty-four miles. Of the levy as well as some of the hotspots in the bypass, so, you know, just to consider where we were, you know, almost six years ago. Of not having an assessment passed and just kind of taking a look in, in, in the formation of Center Beats Flood Agency, and here we were, we would be. To get, uh, ourselves safe on many of that stuff, on a two-hundred flood protection and some into a hundred. I think was a huge, it still is a huge accomplishment for our community. Uh, so we continue to do that. Um, in, in addition to that, we'll be heading back to Washington DC next week, which is a capital to capital. And myself representing the flood agency back there and see if we can, and get some more of our elected officials to push this thing along, so. That's all I've got at this point in time.
All right. Well, I'll just kind of piggyback a little bit on the, the, uh, Center Beats Flood Control Agency, um. Uh, as, as he said, we're still continuing to work, and hopefully by tomorrow, we should have agreement between the tribe and the corps. Uh, I had the opportunity to be out at Beal last week for groundbreaking for the new DG S two. And the CE building, uh, Civil Engineering Building, which burned down two years ago in January. And, uh, those are two huge milcon projects that are gonna be taking place at Beal. Uh, for a base today to have even one milcon project is, is a good thing, and to have two of them going on. I believe it was eighty-five thousand square feet for the, the new DG S two, and it's gonna be forty-seven thousand square feet for the CE. Uh, facility. So there are two very large projects that will be taking place in our community, and hopefully will be some. Some, uh, benefits to local contractors and different things as that progresses forward. But at that, uh, that groundbreaking, the Colonel from the Corps of Engineers was there, so I had a chance to talk with him. Regarding the issue of, uh, the cultural, uh, findings that we've been dealing with between the tribes and the corps. And, uh, was very positive that he, uh, is very hopeful that we are able to come to an agreement here within the next day or so. So that, that was very encouraging. Um, met with Barry Broome from Greater Sacramento and, uh, uh, city manager. Mr. Krager and, and Darren Gale to discuss, uh, the Greater Sacramento project that they're working on, which will. Most likely be coming back before the council in the next couple of months. Um, it, uh, looks to be something that would be a valuable tool for our economic development. Uh, for this region, so, uh, there'll be more on that coming up. The, uh, employee awards, it was a pleasure to be there to honor, uh, the employees for different, uh. Longevity of being at the city, anywhere from five years to twenty-five years, and, uh, it's, uh, it's amazing. Uh, to see how long some people have been with the city and the years that they've put in, and, uh, we have a, a very good. Uh, what I call family of employees, because they work together, they've helped us. Over the past few years with the difficult times with budgets and so on, and have been understanding, and it's been. It's good and it's nice to honor those people that have helped us get to where we are. Um, last week, uh, had twenty-three German exchange students sitting right out here in where you are. And had opportunity to, uh, answer questions for them and asked a few questions of them and give them a tour of City Hall. They will be leaving, I believe, this, this week. So they've been here for, uh, actually, it'll be next week that they leave. They're gonna be here a total of three weeks. They've been here a week, uh, last Thursday. Let's see, here, I had the, uh, Feather River Air Quality Management District meeting yesterday. Um, and, uh, good news that they have settled some of the losses that they've had outstanding over the past few years and, and. Hopefully we'll have, um, some resolution with those things. Uh, also went to a meeting out at Beal with, uh, city manager Krager, uh, for the P four initiative. Which is the privatization of a lot of the services that Beal does, such as, um. Waste water treatment, electricity and different things that they're currently doing that doesn't help them with what their mission is. But they have to have to survive out there, and so Congress has basically said to the Air Force and military in general. Is that you need to turn these over to public agencies to help you with those, and so. This was one of the many meetings that we've had, and it was very informative to, uh, hear where they're at in that process. And, and in some cases, it was pretty amazing to see all the layers that it took to make things happen, but, uh. And then, of course, participating in the Bakaai Parade and all the, as I call Bakaai Weekend with the, uh, hostess. And then the different receptions, the parades and dinners and so on, so. That's all I have to report at this time, and with that, meeting is adjourned.